All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of July 25th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Faber?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kevin Kedzier, would you come up to the front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kedz- Kedzier. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on to D, Presentations, we have none. Moving on to E, Public Participation, we have none. Moving on, and those that came to speak about the L, we're gonna open that up for public discussion, so don't worry. Moving on to Appointments, Agenda Item F, we have none. And then moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. One, Minutes Submitted by the City Clerk, we have none. And then two, Minutes Submitted by the Recording Secretary, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of July 11th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion, comments? Hearing, none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to H, Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through July 25th, 2022, in the amount of $2,873,853.60. And number two, Freedom of Information Act, FOIA Report, June 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson. I'm gonna say, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Would that be accurate? Okay. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to I, Public Hearings, I'm gonna go ahead and call the public hearing to order at 6:03. It's the public hearing for Capital Assistance Grant Application, Paratransit Vehicle Acquisition for the City of DeKalb Public Transportation Program. Is there anyone in attendance that wanted to speak to this public hearing? Hearing, none. City Manager, did you want to speak to anything on this?
I'd just say that we have two public hearings tonight, and they both concern our transit system. This first one concerns our paratransit vehicles, and there is an opportunity to participate in a program funded by state and federal money entirely that would afford us, if we were accepted, three new 14-passenger paratransit buses for $225,000, and procurement of one ADA-accessible minivan for $62,000, and we'd like to apply for that, and there will be an item further on the agenda which is a specific resolution to that effect.
Any comments or questions or discussion from council? Okay, hearing, none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:04. Again, I have no idea if I need to gavel it, but I am gavelling it because it's my meeting. All right, exactly. All right, so, and no roll call or anything on that, correct? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, Public Hearing, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order at 6:04. It is a public hearing for Capital Assistance Grant Application, Fixed Route Vehicles and Equipment Acquisition for the City of DeKalb Public Transportation Program. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to this item? Hearing, none. City Manager.
Once again, we're required, under the guidance of the state and federal government, to hold public hearings when we're applying for grants of this sort. In this case, the grant application would be for our fixed route transit system, and specifically, the purchase of six fixed route buses. These are the big ones that you see out there, for a total of $4.2 million, and some scheduling software, tracking software, fleet maintenance management software, and some bus camera systems, and all that together came to $5,418,000. Again, to be, if we are awarded this grant support, then it would be entirely paid for by state and federal funds. It's a good deal, if we can get it.
Counsel, comments, questions?
One other thing I should mention, Mayor, in the background, you'll see that currently, we have an anomalous circumstance in our provision of service through our transit system, which is that unlike all the other agencies, and there are many more, but we listed those that are more nearby in your background tonight, we don't own most of the buses. So, we have a contract with a particular contractor, and they provide the buses, and they also provide the drivers, and that's obviously the heart of the system. If we decide to go to bid someday, and we got somebody else we like better, and we wanted to partner up with them, they undoubtedly would provide the drivers, but they might not have the buses. So, they might come in and say, "Okay, where are the buses?" Well, we've got six, but we need 28. So, this is a long-term process to get us into a situation where we'll be able to entertain more competition as time goes along. And how did we get into this position? Well, as you know, we consolidated the system that was not built for what it's become, but it was built in several pieces, and it made a lot of sense. It's actually worked pretty well over the last couple of years, but it's unique, and we wanted to solve that anomaly, and we have to start somewhere, and that's what this is about.
Counsel?
Yes, Solomon Verbic. Do we have any input as to the type of buses? In other words, green energy, more, I guess, energy-efficient in that manner?
I think I saw, yes, Mike Newkirk, he can speak to that in detail.
Good evening, Mike Newkirk, Transit Manager. At this point in time, I wrote the grant just kind of based on traditional gasoline vehicle or diesel vehicle needs. There are federal funds that we'd be looking at long-term that can address hybrid and electric vehicles. The other thing we can also look at is a lot of other transit systems have gone to, like, you know, say, taking their diesel fleet and converting it to natural gas, things like that. At this point in time, I was just focused on, like, the workhorses, the fleet. As we move forward with the construction of the transit facility, that would be a good time to address that infrastructure for electric vehicle recharging.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Alderwoman Morris?
I just wanna thank Alderman Verbic for bringing that up, because that's really important, I think, moving forward for our community, and it's exciting to see that possibility. I know in other cities I've lived, they've had hybrid buses, and when they drive by, you don't taste the fumes, and it's kind of amazing.
Yeah, they're quiet, yeah.
Yes, very quiet, yeah.
Any other comments?
I got one question. So, the grant, is it an all-or-nothing thing, or can we get a percentage of it? You know, can we get four buses, or six buses, or no buses? How does, how is it, that work?
My apologies, I kind of stepped away prematurely, I think.
Oh, no.
My experience with the rebuild Illinois Grants, like, I think I'll even use an example with the last one where we were awarded $12 million through this program for the transit facility. I believe our original ask was 20 million, and they came through with 12 million, which was substantial. It was still, I think, the, maybe the second or third-largest individual award in the state to this program, so it was very significant and a huge win for this community. My guess is, we'll ask for 5.4 million, and they may come back with us with 3 million or something like that, but it still, you know, puts us further ahead. And long-term, like I said, what I'm just trying to do is take advantage of grant funding, so that our transit program can transition, as the city manager had said, away from this owned model by our contractor to, we own the fleet, and, you know, we work with the contractor to provide those vehicles.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Sure you wanna sit down?
Don't sit down, Mike.
No other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, just so you know, we're, the grant, we may want electric vehicles, but it's really determined by the federal and state level whether or not they approve those vehicles at right now. I think, I've seen a couple of the new ones, but I don't know, Mike, if they, right, we're not 100% sure those are on the, I don't want everybody to get the...
Told you, Mike.
I told you, you should know me better than that.
I'm getting my steps in.
That, we're putting in, we would like electric vehicle or buses, but it depends.
Right now, IDA really doesn't have the capacity to grant out federal vehicles. They're not, they just went through that round recently, where they were looking at being a sub-grantee until the federal level, providing out electric vehicles, and just figured that they didn't have the resources to do that. So, again, that's probably where I'd be looking at in the future. There's a small buses, or a small urban bus grant that is available every year, comes out in March, and it so happens that the time it came out was, like, the first day I started here. But long-term, like I said, that's what we'd be looking for, is those electric vehicles through that grant program, and it would be a great opportunity to do that, especially in this community.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
I'd stay there. I'd stay there. Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing, none. You can sit down, Mike, thanks. I did want to take the opportunity, although this discussion was really good, since we have a full house, you're gonna find a lot of times that there's not a lot of discussion at the council level. We bring something forward, the city manager gives us a little bit of background, and we approve it. And the reason for that is, the background material that we're provided at a council level is substantial. If you go online, you'll be able to read, and everyone has access to this. Not only just the summaries, but the in-depth studies that have been produced that are as part of the background material. City Council has access to that ahead of time, just like the residents of our community, every Thursday before council meetings, so we become very informed. Then we have city staff that we reach out to, and I've reached out to Mike multiple times, and he has been incredibly responsive, gets answers right back. So, we have the ability to lean on staff before we come to the meeting. So, if you're ever in a meeting and you're wondering why there isn't a lot of discussion about something, chances are there already has been at an individual alderman and mayor level with staff to become as formed as possible in order to make an informed vote. So, just wanted to call that out, but this was a great discussion. All right, at this point, since there's no other discussion, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:12 PM. All right, moving on to considerations. Number one, public discussion regarding redevelopment in the Hillcrest-Blackhawk area and Annie Glidden North area. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Do you want to tee it off, or you want me to tee it off? Okay. So, there's been a lot of discussion about the L that we have, that we own at this point, and what are we gonna do with the L? City Council, well, the goal here is, and you can see, we've got a packed house, for the public to be able to come out and provide comment on ideas that they have, strategies that they might have, in order to offer their perspectives to City Council. All of us, we're gonna have ample opportunity to discuss this going forward, because at its core, we own the property, and whatever development happens in that L will come before council for council's approval during the process. So, tonight is really just about giving the public an opportunity in order to share their ideas with all of us directly. I've been in a bunch of meetings, City Manager Nicholas has been in a bunch of meetings, I'm sure some of you have been in meetings and have heard input and things like this. This is just one way that we can open up our city council meeting in order to have the public give their comments. For the public, in order to keep things moving, because we have a full agenda tonight, and there's a lot of city bits, and this we need to accomplish, if you want to come up and talk about the L, you're more than welcome to, and I guess just raise your hand, and I recognize a lot of you, but I may not recognize everyone. I'll just point to you, and you can come up to the podium, and you can share your points. I'd love, if someone already covered it all, and you still want to come up, you could say, "Hey, so-and-so covered it all." That'd be great, again, to keep the meeting moving. I figure three to five minutes per person, but if you need to go a little longer, that's okay. But again, I just want to make sure that we keep things moving, because, again, we've got a long agenda to get through tonight. So, with that, did you want to chime in, or are you good?
I couldn't possibly improve on that. I just wanted to say that when people do approach those who haven't done this before, they should state their name and where they live.
Yeah, maybe who you're representing, or what org, or why you're commenting, but at least give us your name, that'd be great. So, at this point, is there anyone that would like to come forward and talk about the L? And that's, all right, come on up, ma'am. That's awesome. And when you come up to, right before you speak, one last thing I wanted to cover, we also have to remember the L is not the end-all, be-all in Annie Glidden North revitalization. It is a component of it. This is a big area, and we have Opportunity DeKalb to thank, who has spent a lot of time and energy, and many of them are here tonight, that are working with the residents. They'll also have listening sessions that I'm looking forward to attend, and would encourage other council members to potentially attend, that are gonna be taking place directly in University Village and the Annie Glidden North area to get more feedback directly from residents as well. So, again, I just gotta give kudos to the board and Chad of Opportunity DeKalb for doing all the work that you all are doing. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, we didn't, no? Yeah.
You did, all right.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman Smith. I'm gonna gavel you. All right, go ahead, sorry, ma'am.
Oh, no problem, it's good. I got, like, some time to settle in. So, my name is Joey Moore, I'm a resident in the First Ward, and I also run a local nonprofit addressing food insecurity for kids in our community. And I am a little bit late to the party. I just started reading the 96-page AGN Revitalization Plan today. So, one thing, I guess, I feel excited to be the first one to speak, to kick off, as you said, the L is not the end, right? That's not all of our space. But I have noticed in that plan, on page 10, we start talking about the Lucinda area also, and it's significant tonight, because one of our local small businesses that was in the L has now reopened on 901 Lucinda, and the property is awful. We love to go there, we love to go to Graham Cracker Comics, and we love to get a coffee, and we love to get some tacos, and there has been a stairwell boarded up. It is quite rough. There's also not a lot of promoting of those businesses specifically, saying, "Hey, come on out, look how exciting this area is. We have really cool things in that little pocket." So, I'm wondering what the city can do to push a little improvement with the physical space, and a little bit of a public relations campaign to promote those businesses, specifically because we do have someone that was from the Hillcrest property that is now in that space, and there was some talk about supporting businesses as they moved. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Joy. You feel free to clap. Yeah, there you go. Anyone else? I know there's people in the audience that want to come up and make some sort of comment. We're not that intimidating. All right, Mr. Kedzier. Right after him, sir. Oh, sir, yeah, you'll be next, okay.
Yes, I was grateful to do the pledge. Haven't done that in a long time, which is a poverty, and I'm glad I remembered it. My name's Kevin Kedzier. I'm an NIU alumnus. I arrived in '87, and I graduated in '92, and I've maintained an interest in DeKalb and NIU through my membership and my fraternity for over 30 years. I'm a member of Sigma Nu fraternity, I'm their chapter advisor, and I've been involved with that group and Greek life at NIU for quite a long time. And I'm very invested in the community in, in supporting all the organizations, and wanting there to be a vibrant Greek life community for the neighborhood, for the students, for the university. I've got an idea that I wanted to share, and I'll cover five points of this idea. The idea is, I'm gonna, it's a working title, I'm gonna call it Student Dining and Study Center. Okay? Student Dining and Study Center, and I'll submit a copy of this for the record. I'm gonna cover five points, the design of it, the audience that it focuses on, the purpose and function of it, it being a marketable asset to NIU and for Greek life, and finally, it being a neighborhood development and economic stimulus project. So, the design of it, this idea came from evaluating the neighborhood and recognizing that all the fraternities and sororities in that neighborhood, when I was in college 30 years ago, almost every one of them had a cook, and that cook would prepare meals for the fraternity men and the sorority women, and when you have 40, 45, 50 people living in those buildings, it made economic sense. Fast forward to today, the students that live in the fraternity and sorority houses generally don't have a cook, and so they have to figure out where they're gonna go have dinner. And they've gotta get in a car, or get on a bus, and they've gotta leave the neighborhood and go to, you know, university dining halls, or, you know, go find restaurants on Lincoln Highway or what have you. And so, it occurred to me that if we could provide a dining solution that would meet the needs of not just Greek students, but any students that are living in that neighborhood, that would really be a great thing. But what more could we do? How about having a place where people could safely go study, that's just right down the street from where they might live? So, that's where my head is at in this. So, the design of it, right, what would something like this look like? So, you imagine the L, and in my mind, I think of partitioning the L up into, let's call it, five chunks of 20%, right, five units, if you will, and this would be the corner unit, right, so taking up no more than 20% of the land. One of the benefits of this is that it would be a walkable service for the students in the neighborhood. So, you wouldn't have to have an enormous parking lot to meet the needs of what this building would do, because the audience are the students that live right there in the neighborhood. So, I'm imagining a two-story building right on Blackhawk and Hillcrest, and I'm imagining maybe an L-shaped building with, on the inside, imagine a two-story building with interior balconies, so you could sit upstairs and eat, and look down on the main floor, or sit on the main floor and look up at the balconies, kind of like the jungle was back in the day, if anyone has been there. Also, exterior balconies, right, I would really like for a building like this to be really visually interesting, and offer a lot of vantage points for people that are eating and studying there. So, imagine on a day like today, it's hot, but you could sit in the shade on the north balcony, right, or maybe in the colder months, it might only be 55 degrees outside, but if you're sitting on the west balcony in the sun, that's doable. You could eat outside, you could eat inside, you could eat upstairs, downstairs. I imagine an L shape that would offer a courtyard off the back of the dining hall, where people could eat outside on ground level. So, those are front and rear terraces equipped for outdoor dining. And then, inside the building, I imagine small and large convertible spaces designed for private or semi-private gatherings. Student organizations have a need to meet. A lot of times, they'll go to the student center, and they'll reserve a room in the student center, but you think about how enjoyable that is in November and January and February, having to go at night in the dark, in the cold, to go, you know, have a meeting room on campus. I imagine if we're gonna do this, why not have a rooftop terrace or a clubhouse on the top floor that could be rented out for private functions, walkable for most students, limited parking, as I mentioned. So, that's the general design of it. The audience, this would be for NIU students with a valid ID. Now, in the neighborhood, I mentioned Greek students. Right now, there's officially housed, there are six sorority organizations, I'm including Alpha Delta Pi in that, they're planning to return to their house on Blackhawk. There are six sorority organizations and 11 housed fraternities, so you've got 17 Greek houses in that neighborhood. Again, maybe one or two have cooks, and they need a place to go eat. There's unofficially housed Greek letter organizations, organizations that don't have housing, there's nine NPHC groups, that's the Divine Nine, and there are 15 groups in the Multicultural Greek Council, the MGC. The size of the Greek audience, the IFC has 272 men, the PHA has 239 women, the MGC has 140 members, and the NPHC has 62 members. In total, currently, based on the spring 2022 grade report from the university, there are 713 members of Greek letter organizations. So, that's a pretty large audience. In addition to that, non-Greek students live in that neighborhood as well, and that number is unknown. But it's a, it's a pretty substantial audience that we have that is looking for a place to eat every night, right? The purpose and function, I imagine lunch and dinner being served, so open from noon until midnight, I'm sorry, noon until 7:00 PM, serving food, and then evening study halls, you know, kind of like a library, to be able to have a quiet place, a safe place where you can go and study until midnight. And after dining is closed, you could have self-service of coffee and snacks and things of that nature, and multiple study carol banks throughout the building, TV lounge, gaming suite, a game room with coin-operated pool, table, dartboard, foosball, et cetera, and the ability to host indoor or outdoor registered events. The idea here is for this to really become the hub of student activity in that neighborhood. So, during the day, the student center kind of serves that purpose. It's a place where students can congregate, they can eat, they can study, they can socialize. This could be that in the Greek Row neighborhood, let's call it. So, fourth point, marketable asset to NIU and Greek life.
And Kevin, just to be cognizant of everyone's time.
Okay, almost finished.
Yep.
I really believe that something like this could be a competitive advantage for NIU when it comes to recruiting new students to the university. This is really an asset that could be promoted, and could be the deciding factor that students want to come to Northern, as opposed to another university. Being a cornerstone to a vibrant Greek community is essential, especially with the Presidential Initiative to Revitalize Greek Life. NIU athletes, there's about 400 of them, and they use the Jordan Center for all of their athletic support services. We've got over 700 Greeks and growing, and it would be great for there to be a building to serve them and meet their needs. An ideal location to host returning NIU Greek alumni, appeals to parents of NIU students, and it's a tangible way to bring all four Greek councils together to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. Finally, the neighborhood development and economic stimulus, you know, this would really be a great way to increase student occupancy in the immediate walkable area of the L, decrease apartment vacancies, and also encourage landlords to upgrade and modernize their existing apartment stock to appeal to NIU students. And I could talk a lot more, but I won't.
That was great. Any comments or questions for Kevin? All right, that was great. Thanks, Kevin. I think it shows what I know we've already all experienced. This is a very diverse neighborhood with many different interests in there, and that's why it's important that we hear all these, so we have a complete understanding of what the neighborhood offers. Sir, go ahead.
My name's Darrell Crumb, and I survive on Ridge Drive, and I think that's a pretty good achievement, all in all. So, what I want to know is, I'm a firm believer in growing the community and improving the quality of life, not the standard of living, but the quality of life for every citizen of DeKalb and every visitor. But, living on Ridge, I've learned, I've learned how to dodge fast, or I've learned how to drive my Dodge fast. What I want to know is, what will your plans, how will they impact the traffic headed east and west? traffic headed east and west? On Ridge, on Hillcrest, on, on any of the major streets going east and west? Because for us, this is, if it increases traffic and if it increases the speed on traffic, this is not a good deal for us. The community, our community, would do damn near anything to get the city to pay attention to our traffic problems. Fifty-five, forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty miles an hour passing people. We'd like something done about it. If this is going to add to the problem, then we, you know, we'd like to at least have it addressed in the plans, okay? How that traffic would be managed, so that it doesn't further negatively impact the lives of the people who live there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I encourage you, you can reach out. You can reach out to me directly, and I'd be happy to share some specific things, or to Alderwoman Morris on specific, specific things along Ridge. Patrol is one of those that we know we need to increase, and that's an issue citywide. But then also, we're working with our city engineer, and I believe he just got the plans back, to be able to put in a, I'm going to call it a median within Ridge, that'll be a choke point for vehicles, that is at least going to cause people to start pumping the brakes and slowing down, so.
If you can put up a camera, I'll play for it.
Yeah, yeah. We, this is a high topic of discussion that Alderwoman Morris has brought to our attention multiple times, and we're really trying to figure out long-term what's going to be a solution to that. So appreciate that, those comments. Anyone else? You all came out tonight. Ah, Mr. Kenny.
Good evening. I'm Dan Kenny. I'm with Opportunity DeKalb and also DeKalb County Community Gardens. Couple of things I'd like you to keep in mind as we go forward with this, is that there's more to the neighborhood, as you've already said, than just the L, and there's many different projects that are already started or in the process. One of those, of course, is the new First United Methodist Church, that's just broken ground. Also in the process is New Hope Baptist Church, will be starting soon, the construction of a new addition. There will have an indoor basketball gym, as well as an expanded food pantry and multipurpose space. DeKalb County Community Gardens will be breaking ground in 2023 on the construction of a community health, education, and food chef's center. In addition to increased food access, this multipurpose campus will include job training, garden center, greenhouses, commercial shared-use kitchen, social service office space, a cafe, a food pantry, indoor/outdoor market. There also beyond the campus will be greater family health, providing health care, as well as a childcare center for zero to five. It's important to keep in mind that experience has taught us that incremental development is the most successful type of development, so I urge you not to rush into any certain specific plan too soon. So as the planning occurs, it is also important to keep in mind that, some of the facts about the new census report. I took the information from three census tracts that are in that neighborhood, and there is now a total population of twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen people in that neighborhood. And those that are ages zero to nineteen is three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six. So the northwest neighborhood is about thirty-two percent of the entire population of the city, and twenty-five percent of the population of the northwest neighborhood is zero to nineteen in age. I'm going to share with you some, with you some of the information that we gathered from several community meetings we've already held, and, and also will share in the future from our future community conversations. Some of them were already mentioned in your background material. Some of the ones that weren't was a mini-target or a mini-Walmart, especially a mini-target since we have one of their largest distribution centers in the, in the, in the world here, that maybe what we could do is lean on them a little bit, to have a mini-target that they have in other university towns, that would attract individuals from all around the community. An entrepreneurial center, a business incubator space, a job training center, a variety of restaurants that would provide dining options that would appeal to people from outside the neighborhood as well. Housing for individuals and couples at age sixty and over. Office and gathering space for fraternity and sorority students. And also, just in general, separate from the L, a need to reduce density, of course, in that neighborhood. One of the things we heard over and over was more activities for children, indoor and outdoor, in a supervised setting, and a safe all-season gathering place for families and individuals with a schedule that will accommodate second and third shift workers. And the last one was kind of a unique idea that came about. We held a meeting for those that were interested in increasing food access in the neighborhood, in particular, those that were interested in forming a grocery store. One of the ideas that came out of that meeting was to create sort of an incentive or some kind of support to the various ethnic grocery stores that we have around town that are kind of struggling, some of them are struggling to keep going in their low, present location. We brought them all together in one location, we could have an international market in one space, as well as a dining facility that provided a variety of different diets and different menus choices that might appeal to those outside the community as well, and it could also serve the sorority and fraternities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Anyone else? Mr. Robie.
Two weeks ago, we saw you. Glenn Robie, Opportunity DeKalb. One of the things that I wanted to kind of advance forward as part of your ongoing engagement with the community, that Opportunity DeKalb is currently working on a plan to meet with the non-student rental residents that live in the neighborhood and do a couple of listening sessions in conjunction with the Center for Governmental Studies, kind of part of our ongoing effort to do a more deep dive and get more quantitative data on what people are looking for, both in that neighborhood and what, in terms of the potential areas for development, as well as what the needs are of the folks in the community. We're also considering having conversations with the student rental residents that live in the neighborhood as well, so getting more of that combined understanding of what's happening. I think, as I said last time, that Opportunity DeKalb, I feel very passionately about, is uniquely qualified and, and is experienced in kind of gathering. There's been survey, many surveys that have been done, sociology studies. We've worked with the university to kind of go out and talk to several hundred students with respect to their views, and obviously, we've had community listening meetings over the years, as well as what the work that we did with the Antiglitt North Task Force. So just keep in mind that we're trying to make sure that you all, that will ultimately make the decision that will happen with the L, but are as most informed about all the things that are happening, and that there is an organization that is working extremely diligently to provide as much, gather as much information and provide as much information to you all as you make your final decisions with respect to the property that you own, but also to inform the general community about what we have learned and gathered and continue to gather with respect to Antiglitt North as a whole. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Robie. Mayor. Yes, Mr. R. Almember.
I was wondering if we could post all of these listening sessions, so if, if it just so happens that three council members attend one session or the other session, I would rather us not have to worry about that and have us all be able to attend the sessions that, that we would like, if that's possible.
Yeah, if I can be informed of when the sessions are, and I'll get that information to you.
Good point.
Great. Thank you.
Others? Okay. I'm going to.
I guess I kind of have one question, and I'm not sure where the answer is, but some of the data that was thrown out there has kind of given me cause to think. So if we look at the, the distribution of our population, there's twelve-thousand people in that area, and I thought the number of students over there were, what's the number of students versus the number of non-students in the area? I guess is.
I think the only data we have are, are Greeks. I don't know if we know from the student population, though.
I heard the Greeks and the athletes, and I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what, how that fits? What's that look like? How many non-students are over there?
I wonder if that's something we could ask Northern to query, because they would have the, the address of, of their students, potentially. I mean, some students will leave their home address, even though they're living here, right?
And even if it's some spitballing numbers, you know, just something that's, something is correctional, correct?
I think we also have to come to agreement on the size of the area, because there was a size that was defined in the Antiglitt North Task Force, and, and Dan and I haven't had a chance to talk, so I'd like to see, there are some census tracts that expand beyond what was considered to be that AGN neighborhood. So let's define the turf and then look to define the demographics.
We will, we'll ask you, what color they might be able to shed on that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Robie, you look like you want to, you, you kind of had your.
Okay, one of the other hats that I wear is I'm president of the DeKalb Area Rental Association. So we can poll our members to kind of see if they've got quantitative data on their residents, because most of the landlords, a lot of landlords in that area are connected with our organization, and see if we can't provide that, you know, based on what the tendency is. Also, keep in mind that, that area does include, you know, the property formerly known as Eden's Garden, which has a lot of families and townhomes there, as well as your traditional apartment rental, and then obviously fraternity and sorority houses. So there's quite a mix of things and areas that are included. Single-family homes are also included in it that may or may not be rental property, so there's, there's a good mix of, of housing in that area. So trying to understand exactly what's in every house, maybe a little, little challenging, but we can probably get you some general idea.
Yeah, I was just looking ballpark-wise, you know, because there's always that, that discussion of, particularly in that area, is it, is it NIU, is it non-residence, or is it residence? You know, there's just a, it's nebulous. It, it's really hard to get your arms around.
It is. Also, University Village is included in that area as well, so, which is a five-hundred-some-odd units, probably mostly family in that, in that property, but, and then one other thing I wanted to mention is that there is a, a tremendous focus, and I think I said this last time, but I wanted to say it again, to make sure that all voices are heard. So not only are we looking at the student voices, this is back to Opportunity DeKalb hat, but we also, the, the families, the marginalized communities, it's going to be a deep dive in all of it, so that no voice is left unheard in terms of what we're trying to bring to the table.
And that's really where I was going, what, how many are non-students that are in there?
And we're very committed to that. I mean, you know, it, you know, it supports the efforts of having a, a community that is vital to everyone that's there, not just one group or another, or students and non-students, Greek, non-Greek, it's, it's, it's a, it's a community. It's probably going to be that way for a long time, and so we're very focused to make sure that all voices are heard, and it's not just one popular segment or not. And I think that, I just want to lean in on that, because it's very important to Dan, as a leader of our organization, myself, and other members of the group, that no voice is left unheard in the discussion. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the partnership with Opportunity DeKalb, helping drive whatever the successful decision is or opportunities that we end up placing there. It's great to have and be able to work with you all to help us make that decision. Yes, sir?
I'm still Daryl. I'm curious about one thing. As a, as a taxpayer here, what does this increase cost us in terms of police and fire? And how, how will it, will it add to our revenue? Will it, will it take away from our revenue? Will it become more of a liability? We've had some activity go along there that has really been heavy, has required a lot of heavy police force action, and nobody wants to pay for that. But it gets, it gets taken away from the rest of the communities, because we just have so many policemen, and they have to be where the, where they're needed. So if we're addressing this, are we looking at how it's going to affect the community financially? I'm talking now about the legend taxpayers, the ones who have been here for ten, fifteen, twenty years and have paid heavy, you know, paid into their real estate taxes, have to improve this community, help to build DeKalb into what it is today. How's it going to affect them financially? How's it going to affect their quality of life? I want to go back to quality of life. How's it going to affect their quality of life, their ability to go out and do the things they want to do, be able to walk outside and not hear gunshots being fired somewhere?
So there's a, there's a lot to what you just commented on. I'll, I'll hit a couple of highlights. Our focus has been to continue to drive safety throughout the entire DeKalb, and that means for every resident. That doesn't mean just legacy. That means someone who just started living here two months ago, attended school or decided to move their family out here for a better life. Every resident of DeKalb is the focus to make sure that they have a safe environment to be able to raise their family, go to work, and enjoy everything that DeKalb has to offer. So we don't single out or target any specific demographic when it comes to that.
I'm not talking about demographics so much, Colin.
That's how I'm responding, so I'm choosing to respond that way. Safety is our number one priority. I don't know if you noticed your property tax is going down this year?
Yeah.
Right? So that is obviously a priority of the city of DeKalb as well, and we'll continue to drive that. So I think when you look around, and I don't know if you get the paper and read it religiously, but when you look around, the amount of economic development happening, the amount of increased safety measures that we're putting in across our entire community, I think you would see that this council is absolutely behind everyone in the city of DeKalb, having a safe place. If we can help drive affordable housing, we're going to help drive affordable housing. We're going to do everything we can for every member of the city of DeKalb.
I, I, as a, I want to personally express my appreciation for what was done with regard, and I'm not trying to name names here, but what was done with regard to Hunter. I mean, that, that kind of proactive activity, our reactive activity, whatever the heck it was, I want to thank the city and the county council for what they did there, because that had, that was becoming an untenable problem.
Well, I guarantee you, we're not done. We just got started, so.
I'm done.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Good to see you.
Hi, good to see you. My name's Honor Morgan. I'm a student at NIU. I've lived in the first ward for about three years now. This idea has been brought up, but I wanted to warn against it, is I've heard a lot of students talking about that they want a bar, or somewhere late-night recreational, or somewhere late-night that they can meet up, because there's not a lot of access, or at least walkable distance bars. I would warn against that. In my opinion, I think we saw a little experiment last year with Jerk Fusion being there, and although the property owners were amazing, their food was amazing, I loved going there at night. It was known to be a hotspot for crime and violence, and I specifically remember students telling me that whenever they would throw their big parties on Saturday, it would be called a Jerk Fusion night, and it means stay away from that corner, because there would be a shooting, or some sort of altercation that you didn't want to be around. So I, in my opinion, I would really discourage anything, late-night hangout, recreation. I don't think that will bring the right audience to that neighborhood.
Thanks, Honor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, come on up. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor Barnes, Alderwoman Morris, Mayor Nicholas, all you guys. Thanks for being here, listening to us, listening to our opinions. I'm a student at NIU. I also happen to be the Director of Greek Affairs for the Student Government Association, so this is a cause near and dear to my heart, because it obviously affects two of the councils that I represent, the Interfraternity Council, which I'm also the vice president of recruitment of, a little bias there may be, and then the Pan-Atlantic Council, which is the sororities that live on Greek Row. I know that you guys are considering, or at least planning to do construction on both Edgebrook and Kimberly, to kind of hammerhead off those two areas, to allow, or to limit the amount of traffic coming through, as well as probably deter some crime from some of those areas that are further back on the road. I want to consider the fact that if we're building something there on the L, that may drive more negative walking traffic and possible violence to those areas that we're already trying to eliminate. Just want to make sure that consideration's made, that if, I know we're saying that we have a lot of space out there, we want to consider the fact that Greek Row is right along that way, and I think it would make, in my opinion, the most sense to really consider the fact that we're trying to create definition of that neighborhood for Greek Row, build off of NIU's plan to expand Greek life, and we'll try to consider that when we're making our decision. I know that there's different student opinions on this, I just, I think. I know that there's different student opinions on this. I just, I think the focus of this maybe should be more student-focused, given where it's located, and given that Greek housing lines just around the entire L itself. Having those two areas built there and then allowing more traffic to come through, I don't think would really benefit us. And that's all I have to say on that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Hearing none. I'm gonna talk slow, just in case. Oh, Alderman Morris.
I wanted to bring this up because I haven't heard it said. Okay, we know suburban apartments is not part of the city of Decalb, but it's right there on the other side. And so I think it's relevant to keep in mind who our residents there are as well because obviously they're probably, you know, if we're looking to have a community outreach-type building, this is probably gonna be something that they're gonna take, not take advantage of, but make use of as well. So I think that's really relevant because we've got a huge population right there. Because we talk about Eden's Garden, and you know, so for those of you who don't know, suburban apartments is not part of the city. It's cut out. And so that's why we're not ever mentioning it, but it's literally right there. So they're gonna be, you know, that was one thought. Wanted to mention, someone else brought up communication. I've heard this again and again, and I needed to say this sooner, but there is a real struggle with communicating things as basic as these listening sessions that are coming up. And so as we're doing that, in the University Village Collaborative area, they kept talking about, how do we communicate stuff to residents? How, how, how? And today I was with another group talking, and, and it occurred to me that maybe just a basic sign, like some of the downtown signs that we have that are like read boards, maybe a read board somewhere, you know, on the corner of our property might be a good addition to start with. Just a tiny read board so that when people walk by, they can read what's going on in the neighborhood, including those listening sessions and stuff like that. So I think that's all I really wanted to mention.
That's a good point, because I'm a member of the University Village Collaborative in $10 meetings, and I'll make an additional point to remind them, once we know the listening sessions that especially Opportunity Cal is gonna put on, and then leveraging Opportunity Cal. Like, I refer to it as a partnership, but City Manager Nicholas and I are, attend all the Opportunity Cal meetings as well, just to keep maintaining that connection. And they spend a lot of time within the Antiglade North neighborhood trying to establish relationships to help get the word out. So we're definitely trying, but that's a, that's a good idea too, is just having something like that. Real quick, Alderman Burdick?
Yeah, and to your comment, Carolyn, this really has been 20 years in the making of some way, shape, or form, if you go back to the Greek Housing Report of 2002. Many of you are touching on a, a lot of the things that are contained in that same, in that report 20 years ago. And I'm sure maybe even some of you were involved and helped out with that plan 20 years ago. So just a big thanks to everybody that has really made this a focus. And I, we're, we're in the home stretch, I believe, with some of the, the variety of things that I'm hearing about that area. Very excited about it, and I look forward to seeing what we can do to make that happen.
Alderman Morrison?
Just a quick, I'll, I'll add on to Mike. I ran into Jerry Smith, and he just wanted me to pass on that he started kind of the original AGN, I think in 2017. He goes, "Some of my guys are still there. They, they have worked so hard." And he's just so impressed on the moves that have really been made in the last year. And he just wanted to say thanks for that. And my, my personal thing is, I know it's about Antiglade North, but it's really about Decalb. What we have learned about Antiglade North is you can ignore a section of your city and just kind of put it off here, and eventually it affects everyone of us. And so instead of looking at maybe, are they students or are they here all the time? There's a lot of things, there's a commonality among all of us of what we need. Whether you're on Antiglade North, if you're just right over in Fox Hollow, you still don't have a close grocery store. You don't have a Target that you don't have to drive two miles north or south to get around, to get over to Sycamore Road. There would be, back to how much traffic goes eastbound and westbound because there's nothing over there. So I think we need to look at what we all have in common and what our basic needs are, whether it's technically Antiglade North, whether you're a student or whatever. Let's just look at what people need, just people. And, and that's what I'm gonna look at, what, when we're picking things or choosing things or trying to see where we go, let's just see what the neighborhoods need. So that's, that's my last.
And the other component of this too is, we don't get to pick if Target will open up a small Target there or if Walmart does. And I hear that a lot from, why doesn't Decalb get an Olive Garden? Or why doesn't Decalb put a community center there? Why doesn't Decalb do X, Y, or Z? The only thing we can do is come up with, what do we think is the best idea for that area? But the economics are gonna drive a lot of that. So if we want a grocery store in that area, we need to find someone that is willing to put a grocery store in that area and make a go at it. This is, this is America at its simplest. It's see and eat, fill and eat. It's the entrepreneurial spirit. That's a component of this too. What we can do is try and focus our energy, and if we offered any incentive whatsoever, we'll come up with where we want to steer this, but ultimately, we don't control exactly what gets put there. Someone has to come up with the idea, someone has to come up with the money, and the operational excellence to be able to make it happen, so. All right. There's, yes. Sure thing, Joey.
What we can do is we can support the businesses that are there right now, right? We can choose, don't drive east, drive west, don't go into Sycamore to pick up Jimmy John's, go to our Jimmy John's. It's like, we can say to a business owner, this could work because look at all this other data, and on Lucinda, guys. So I'll be looking for all the Facebook posts from the city about those Lucinda businesses. And so we can keep supporting them, and we can choose with our dollars what we want to see, right?
Awesome, thank you. All right, so I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. This feedback is phenomenal. Many of us are in a lot of meetings and have heard some of this before, but it's great that you took the time to come out tonight, address the entire council, and now we all are on the same page, at least from the groups that came out tonight offering their opinion. So once again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for coming out, spending your time. Really appreciate it. And with that, you are not obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can leave. It'll be riveting, I swear, but you know, you might wanna enjoy the rest of your night. And thanks again, everybody. All right. That was a great discussion. All right, moving on to number two consideration, a development agreement between the city of Decalb and Nearing Electrical Works Company. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
Shall I move?
Second. Moved by Alderman Favors, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you. So we are gonna transition here, but we are gonna talk about redevelopment. And some of it has been happening since 100 years ago, really. And if you've read the background, I know the council has, people in the audience maybe haven't had a chance, but what we're gonna be talking about for the next couple of minutes at least is the possibility of a development agreement between the city of Decalb and Nearing Electrical Works Company that invites, I think, a creative collaboration to address issues that have, as a growing company, has started to rub shoulders against some established residences and other properties in the area. And what we're looking for here, at least what I propose, and with the collaboration of representatives of the company who are here tonight, Tom Jakowski and Charles Doble.
You.
Charles, oh, you moved up front, yeah, in the front row to represent the company. So I'm gonna lay out the, I've, I've given you a fair amount of detail. What I want to underline is the company has made very substantial investments in the neighborhood, which is roughly bounded by Seventh Street on the west and, and 11th Street on the east and the railroad tracks and a little bit beyond on the north and on the south Lincoln Highway. And in that area, the dominant thriving business is Nearing Electrical Works. And Nearing has made, been making, stranded in solid aluminum and copper wire there since, as I mentioned, 1912. They have focused a lot of that in the long building that is on the north, just on the north side of Locust, East Locust, between Seventh and 10th, but their properties also go to the east side of 10th Street. We've had some discussion here in the past year, year and a half, about what to do about this or that thing. There was a, for a while, one of their acquisitions was of a residential property to try to build a, an employee parking lot, which they did accomplish, and it's open and operating now. There have been other acquisitions that have occurred. But one thing that happens in this area, as in most areas of the downtown, with properties built very close to the sidewalks, whether they're industrial or commercial or residential, is that we have, we have difficulty getting semis to deliver their goods or pick up goods just in the downtown area, if you're, well, if you're in City Hall, as I am most days. You know, there are, in this case, food trucks that are in semis that are delivering food down some of our narrowest alleys and blocking Second Street and blocking Third Street and some portions of Lincoln Highway every day. We've come to adjust to that. And Police Department, represented here by Deputy Chief Levertin, knows very well. He's been working for a lot of years and, and dealing with that. Sometimes the, the rubbing lasts longer, just because to keep the, the work going in the course of the day, the, the electrical company has semis delivering at their Ninth Street loading dock, which is their best loading dock to the, to the main facility. Am I correct? And that means you, you have to back into that. It's been like that since early 1900s. Yeah. So interestingly, if, if we could just kind of, if there's a chessboard and we could kind of wipe all the players off the board, we might say, well, here's the plant. And now we're gonna do this around the sides, and we're gonna have these nice avenues that go in and out. And there are gonna be some side yards for the, the storage of trucks as they are waiting to load up or to, you know, put their tarps back on and get on the road. But we don't have that there. This is not Gurla Road. This is Locust Street. So what do we do? What I've proposed are a number of things, and I'm happy to come back to these. I, I have a very small-scale drawing here, but it represents a couple of things. It shows you the properties that are currently owned by the Nearing Electrical Works and also properties that are in the process of acquisition to try to address some of these issues and also to, to try to frankly effectuate better production inside the company. So what are, what are the things that are pieces of what could be a grand package here in everybody's interest? The, the company is in the process of acquiring the former Virgil Cook and Son Properties on North Eighth Street. This will not allow them more space for storage and for other activity, but also Eighth Street then becomes, since they've already bought the property at the northeast corner of Eighth and Lincoln Highway, stay with me. They, they own that, basically they own the properties on either side of the street. So then we could possibly vacate that, and, and then it could be dedicated toward daily use by the company. The city's construction of a cul-de-sac on North Ninth Street. Well, there are properties there that the company does not own and may not come into ownership of for some time. People have to have access to those properties, and they would be from Lincoln Highway as they are now. Cul-de-sac about halfway between Lincoln Highway and Locust Street would allow people who are going into the adjoining properties to turn around if they need to. It would also allow a vehicle to leave, so this would be a cul-de-sac with a, with a pitot tube on the top of it. Am I right, Tony? Is that sort of like the scientist? That would, would be basically aimed straight into the loading dock at Ninth Street. So the trucks would come in now and then back into the loading dock, could then just pull straight ahead and get out on Ninth Street. Am I doing okay so far? Okay. We would vacate, I, I was talking about Ninth Street, East Locust then from, all the way from Seventh to 10th. Well, how can you do that? Well, what is, what is going to be accessing there but the company once these acquisitions are done? Nobody. They're also gonna be buying the, they're, they're, in the process of purchasing the property, just to the north of what used to be the Bachman Gas Station. The townies like me, but it's, what is it? Go, Solo or is it Solo Gas?
Bachman's.
Am I right? Go Low or Solo?
Something like that.
Something like that. And then on the north side of Locust there, there's a, there's a lot that they would use for storage as well. And then all the way over to 10th Street, that would become basically their side yard. That's their marshaling yard, if you will, because if you are, on a busy day, it would not be unusual to see semis on either side of the road with a path down the middle. But that presents problems. We, you know, the Fire and Police Department are naturally and logically thinking about what, what happens if in the middle of all this, we have to get some emergency vehicles. That's also a concern of the company. So what do we do? If, if that's a calmer access point, and we're not also fighting with the, the, the personal vehicles that try to get through there from time to time, I think it could be rationalized. The city, for its part, would also do a couple of things. There's a, there's a storm drainage catch basin right in the middle of, of that Locust Street stretch between Seventh and 10th. It's the main, it's the low point. It's the main point for carrying water from either side. And it, and in any half-inch rain, I wasn't over there, I should've gone over there on Saturday. It basically floods the street because it's undersized with its affluent pipe. And so without a lot of, of trouble on our part, we could get that enlarged to take it to the Seventh Street piping, which is the proper size to take it away. And then the street would be yours forever and always. So, let's see, one more. Oh, and ultimately and finally, we're, we're about law, right, here at the city? And one, one important piece when you're talking about the development of land is the zoning of the land. So right now, we have a hodgepodge. We have some light industrial, we have some commercial, we have some residential. We have other pieces of, of the zoning map that don't fit exactly. So that, those parts that would be owned by the company would become one consistent zoning. It would be a planned development industrial. We've done that. If we were, again, the chessboard, that's how we would begin. That's how we've begun, begun with some of the bigger projects in Decalb, as you know, in recent years. And then that allows for a variety of uses to be pursued, but we can specify those that don't fit. The company's not interested in, in making dynamite. The company's not interested in explosives and so forth. There are things in the heavy industrial zoning, for instance, that we would probably not want to see there. And that's a, that's a collaboration. We just have to work through the list of uses and say, yeah, never, maybe, all the time, and, and work that out. So I, I've given you some pieces, and I've given you a map. And I, I want to thank Alderman Perkins for, and also the mayor, for helping me on the city's side and working with the, the company to get to this point where we can think creatively and in a large picture about how we can solve some problems. We don't want to follow and pursue over some small thing. This truck is a little bit over here or, or whatever. That's, we're trying to enhance opportunities for good, solid business and good neighbors. And I think, I, I believe in my discussions with the company that that's where they are too. So I'll, I'll stop. We have some, as I mentioned, two representatives from the company here if they might want to say something at this point, I don't know, or maybe just answer questions.
I will say something briefly here. So my name's Tom Jakowski. I'm the CFO of Nearing Electrical Works. Many of you know, I've been here longer than I have. Nearing opened its doors in 1912. Called Decalb Home for over 100 years. And for with us, we're proud, lead Decalb, we're proud to be here. It's no clearer to me than our decision to build our east plant facility that's at the northeast corner of Locust and 10th Street. We built that during the Great Recession. We didn't move it to a different state. We didn't. We didn't ask for assistance from the government. We saw an opportunity to take market share for our competitors, and we did it. And that's sort of where we're at today. We're expanding and sort of growing out of the space we have. And some of that growth is being driven by some exciting things. Electric vehicles, continued expansion of infrastructure in our country and the electric grid. And our hope is to continue to grow in DeKalb without having to relocate our operations. So we appreciate your consideration. Counsel.
I seriously, I seriously never made the connection between electric vehicles and what you guys do. So I really appreciate you drawing that very clear connection.
I don't know if people are percolating, or?
Mayor, may I just, just before, I'm sorry, Alderman Perkins.
So, so where are you guys at with the potential acquisitions of these other possibilities? I know we talked about a few different things, and all of these, there's a lot of moving pieces, you know, for consideration.
Yeah, so the map that you see here are the acquisitions currently under contract, so I can't really speak anymore further to that.
So, so the blue ones are under contract, then?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so Nearing owns the blue and the plum pink, what?
Yeah, so Nearing currently owns the purple, and I'll blame Bill's color scheme here.
Purple.
But the blue properties you see there, so to the far left of the graphic there is the Virgil Cook Properties, and then to the left of that, of the Go Low Gas Station that Bill alluded to, is the former Bachman property that's just vacant land right now.
Been that way forever.
So, the real question here is, do we want to allow them to purchase city land as part of it, right? Is that, or, and then the other real questions here are, what do we want to do with the streets? Do, and do we want to vacate all these spaces? Those are the questions, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's any purchase of city land. It's vacate of city.
So, vacation, which, you know, the land has value, but then there's investment by the company many more times. What we're, you know, in, in the acquisition of properties, and as Alderman Perkins said, and as Tom alluded to, there, there are discussions about other possibilities here to round out the, the map. But what I showed you is what we know today, as we're here tonight, and I, I laid out what might be reciprocal responsibilities, so you know what they were.
And your goal is to, I mean, obviously, they're looking for, hey, are we warm to this idea?
Yes. And my, my idea would be, assuming we're warm to it, and I, I haven't heard yet that we're not, that we bring back a development agreement. That's how normally we do this, and we memorialize what we have talked about here, and that can grow. A simple amendment the next time we have an opportunity to sit down, if, as there are, as there is more to know and more to discuss publicly.
Yeah, I think I like this. I think this seems like a positive thing to support a local business and to help them encourage their continued growth here, and it sounds like that's what they want too.
Alderman Smith?
As one of these, those old timers in the area, actually, I've driven up and down Ninth Street, Eighth Street constantly over, all the time, and the traffic, there's not that much traffic, I think would truly benefit them, but by being able to controlling our, the semi-traffic. And I try, I'm sitting here, trying to recall where I was at, and I'd like to mention this, where I saw some new type of signage that was helping, I want to think it was at my daughter's in Dallas, to control semi-traffic in this particular situation, where, I guess where I'm going, and maybe with the development agreement, it would help, you know, as, as they're coming into town, where they need to go. I see them kind of, as you say, percolating the area, trying to figure out where they'd go, and maybe some signs, simple signs would help them, I mean, your, your driver, the guy, or whoever you're getting stuff from, just to get where they need to go, because I know some making some of those turns. People are very conscientious when a semi needs to hook a corner, and, but I, I really like this idea. I mean, I know, know the family in Nearing's really well, so I think this is a great movement.
Actually, you're right. There are two reasons why the semi circle. One, one is they're not maybe, if they've never been here before, and they're, maybe it's a trucker from time to time, isn't, they're, they're trying to find it because it's set off. And the other reason is, they have been here before, and they're trying to jockey so they can whiz in there when the, the guy on Ninth Street leaves. Am I, am I right? I mean, sometimes it happens.
It's a game they're playing, yeah.
Timing's everything.
Alderwoman Larson?
I just wanna, two things. Thank you for continuing to choose DeKalb, and I want to make sure that we don't ignore companies who are already here because there's a new company coming in, and it's like, oh, come on, we'll get them, and, you know, we'll bend over backwards. If we're bending over backwards for Girler Road, we're bending over backwards for your project as well. And, and I think this makes sense, and it's slowly clearing the chessboard that Bill alluded to, and, and I think it would just be a benefit to that whole area. And then it even allows the houses down the road to see, well, maybe it will be time to start looking, because they're doing so well. It's a great company, and that, you know, it will be enlarging hopefully in the future as well. So, I'm warm, I'm thumbs up.
Any other comments, questions? So I, I'm feeling like we're nodding heads to move forward. All right, Bill? That looks like some thumbs up and head nods.
Thank you, Doug. And just one more thank you to Alderman Perkins, and also to Ray Hott, who's present in the company. Both, at the same time, thought it would be a good idea to think outside the box, and that's how we got to where we are, so I'm very grateful for that.
Well, I want to thank Tom and Charles for coming out tonight. It's great. It's always nice when representation from an organization's here, just as questions come up, to be able to answer those. So really appreciate you taking your time out tonight. And as I told the previous group, you do not need to stay. You can go about your evening. We will not take any offense whatsoever, and I would encourage you to do so, so.
Our pleasure.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Bill, thanks for your work pulling this together, though, too. I mean, it's, it's, you're dealing with a lot of different moving pieces.
No doubt.
And building some consensus isn't always easy.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, no doubt. All right, moving on to, agenda item three. By annual review of compensation of elected officials as per city, as per Chapter Two, City Council, section, you bet, sir. Section two point one five, elected official salary review preceding the April fourth, 2023 consolidated election. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager?
Thank you. As the title suggests, the, there is law that comes to bear here, the Local Government Officer Compensation Act, which specifies that the compensation of elected officers shall be fixed at least a hundred and eighty days before the beginning of the terms of the officers whose compensation is to be fixed. So as we look forward, the alderman exceeds in the first, third, fifth, and seventh wards, which will be held on April fourth, 2023, are still more than a hundred and eighty days out, but the, the last time we'll be able to take any action really is the end of September, when that hundred and eighty day window will close before we have another regular meeting. So brought this up, thanks to Ruth Scott, who's, who's very attentive to these details, and it's, it's for you to talk a little bit about whether you think those four positions are in need of a review in terms of compensation. Now, at the next election, when the mayor and, and three other alderman posts and the clerk's position will be up, there'll be another opportunity, another hundred and eighty day window and so forth, but this is for those four positions. So we, we will have, we could potentially have staggered compensation, which has happened before.
So, since the mayor and the clerk aren't till later, we're gonna have review that again.
Right.
The real discussion, I think, is about council members and the next four that either retain their seats or, or come in.
You could set it for the other ones, though.
Good point, yes. Yeah, we could set it. I just think, and they could set it, and then it'd change two years from now, anyway, so. I'm not looking for a change, so, yes.
Yeah, I think it's good that we're bringing it up. I also think that nobody does this job for compensation, but this is a matter of public service, and while the compensation is sufficient, I don't really think at this point we should raise anything. I'm more than happy to keep it status quo.
Smith, Morris, any comments, questions? Tee it up, there is massive inflation. Hearing none, I, I am assuming we're nodding our head to leave compensation exactly the same for the next election?
Okay, we'll bring back, well, I don't know, we don't have to.
Yeah, right, because it's not gonna change, yeah. Okay. Easy. All right, moving on to agenda item K, resolutions. Number one, resolution two zero two two dash zero six two, authorizing submission of an application for capital assistance grant for paratransit vehicles under the Illinois Department of Transportation's general authority to make such grants for the purpose of offsetting certain public transportation facility capital costs in the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This item and the next item are connected to those hearings we had at the top of the agenda. The first one deals with the paratransit vehicles, and the number's the same, and we recommend approval.
Counsel. Hearing none, roll call?
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two two dash zero six two passes. Moving on to number two, resolution two zero two two dash zero six three, authorizing submission of an application for a public transportation capital assistance grant under the Illinois Department of Transportation's general authority to make such grants for the purpose of offsetting eligible public transportation capital costs of the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager?
Likewise, this item refers to those fixed route vehicles and other expenses that were referenced in the public hearing at the top of the agenda, and we recommend your approval. The total for this is, much more it is, five million four hundred and eighteen thousand.
Any comments or questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none, roll call?
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two two dash zero six three passes. All right, moving on to number three, resolution two zero two two dash zero six four, authorizing the purchase of two Ford E450 Type III Osage, Osage ambulances from North Central Emergency Vehicles plus upfitting expenses necessary to place the ambulances in service in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-one thousand eighty-four dollars. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The, we call it the GEM-T program, but it's more officially known as the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program that the city participates in. It provides us some gap funding between what we have historically received in Medicaid reimbursements, which has been a fraction of the actual cost for ambulance transports. And so we get generally the difference that we've left on the table for years and years, and, and the, the ability to access this program was, was through the efforts of the fire administration and also Local 1236, which about a year and a half ago worked very hard in pulling some strings to get attention to our growing ambulance needs and demands. The GEM-T funds are sufficient to provide capital money outside of Fund 400 and Fund 420, which carry a, a heavy load for other vehicles and capital purposes, and we're very pleased about that. And there is a GEM-T committee that consists of, of two members of management and two members of Local 1236. And as you know, we have been to you with requests on the fire engine side, and we're looking to receive our first of two fire engines this year by maybe the second meeting in August, is that right?
Yes.
At the, yep, at the latest. And I think what we'll do is try to park it outside here so that people coming in can go, ooh, you know, it'll never look better. So, but also the fund is, is available to the point here of this item to help us with the purchase of two ambulances. These are replacement ambulances, they're not expanding the fleet, but they're replacing ambulances that have grown old and are nearing their, the end of their useful lives. One's a two thousand six Ford E450, and the other one, which has a hundred and six thousand miles on it. The other's a two hundred and five International with ninety-eight thousand miles, and some of you with a Subaru can maybe get two hundred thousand miles out of it. But these ambulance miles are hard miles, and, and the engines have all been fixed many times, and the last thing you want is for the ambulance to break down with, with a patient. So, we have, I, I want to thank Chief Thomas for aggressively pricing of what's in the market right now. We, we found a vendor, North Central Emergency Vehicles, which was the lowest bidder. The lead time for ambulances right now, partly because of the times, and partly because these are custom, all custom-built to the needs of the particular agency, are anywhere from a year and a half to two years. So what you would be voting on tonight is a, is a, or two purchases that would be actually funded by our budget in FY23, but we have to get the permission now, or else we, we just keep pushing that, that target further and further into the distance. So it's before you tonight. I feel that Mike's done a very good job with, with his staff, and with the department, and, and specing out what, what they need and being economical about it. These are very aggressive prices, and I think we ought to jump on it. So it's for two ambulances, including the necessary upfitting, which is some, some price, but it's not a significant price. And the total is four hundred and thirty-one thousand and eighty-four dollars.
Counsel. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two zero two two dash zero six four passes. All right, moving on to resolution two zero two two dash zero six five, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and the execution of an agreement with Lane Christensen Company for maintenance inspection and repair to well fourteen in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager?
As Brian Favors explains in his background report, which was attached to this agenda, we had planned on lifting the well motor to well fourteen over on West Drescher sometime later this year. It couldn't wait. So July sixth, it, it failed to operate, and it's resisted all of our attempts to restart it. This is in a shaft, a well shaft, so you can't just peer down or pull it out, you've got to pull the shaft out and the well motor out. And through the, I, I think the, the good planning over a lot of years that Brian Favors brought to this, to our water utility, the, the good news is that we've always had a spare, because when these things go out, it's not a good thing. Like, as you can see, it's twelve, thirteen percent of our, of our water supply comes from the pump at, at this location. What if one or two of these went out? So we keep a spare, so we can pretty quickly repair this. It has to be pulled, it's gonna take some weeks, but we have to then replace that motor, and ultimately, in the budget for FY23, we'll pick up the other pieces of that cost that, so you have a full, full complement of parts and so forth on the shelf, if you will. But for now, we need your permission to work with Lane Christensen, which is, had been very involved with us over a number of years in, in well repair and, and in helping us spec out what, what's needed. And to repair well number fourteen is gonna cost us up to sixty thousand dollars at this point. Comes out of the Water Fund.
Counsel? That was an educational moment for me when I became mayor and Brian gave me a tour. I always thought the pumps were in the wellhouse and we sucked it out of the ground. I didn't realize the pump is all the way down there and we're pushing it out. So, yeah, you definitely, you're right, you can't just peek down and, oh, yeah, it's this part. All right, hearing no other discussion, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Resolution 2022-065 passes. All right, moving on to agenda item L, ordinances. We have none for second reading. Agenda item M, ordinances first reading. Number one, ordinance 2022-030, amending Chapter Two, City Council, Section 2.12, Rules of Order and Procedure to Permit Attendance by a Means Other Than Physical Presence. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Recently took account of the fact that our municipal code is silent about remote attendance of members of the corporate authority, all of you, even though the governor's executive orders for the better part of two years have made it very clear that you can do this and our home role powers allow us to do it as well. And so this is just a little bit of cleanup to expressly allow remote attendance by, for council meetings by you, as permitted under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Illinois. And there's a little bit of language here to explain that. We recommend your approval.
I like how it is some specific guidelines, not just, hey, whenever you want, didn't want to get dressed, TV dinner's in the oven, don't come, just attend remotely.
The TV dinner ordinance is separate from this.
It's got to be, it's got to be a little more than that. All right, any questions or comments, Counsel? All right. Oh, yes, sorry, Alderman Favor.
So I know it says, right, if you intend to do this, you need to do it before, notified before the meeting.
Yes.
Are we going to set a guideline for, we need, because we have to set up a Zoom, I'm assuming, or we have to?
Or a phone call, but that notice is when practical, so then there could be an emergency situation that would prevent you from coming. But in order to attend remotely, there has to be some advance notice. That could be by, like we said, by telephone or by Zoom.
So we could put something in there, right? Do you have a suggestion, since you came up with the question? Alderman Favor.
I would think maybe an hour.
Oh, an hour? I would go much more than that.
Would you?
Yeah, just because, we're right, there is some technical things that have to happen to allow Jeff or whoever, Jeremy to...
I didn't want it to be 15 minutes.
I was thinking, I mean, this would most likely come up that it's something planned and we've all missed meetings and then that's just fine because we have lives too. But this would probably be opening up the opportunity for someone that really wanted to attend something and something family-wise or work-wise came up and it allows them to be able to attend the meeting and participate, is my thought behind it. So, is it a day or, oh, go ahead.
I like keeping it flexible unless it seems like it needs to be more clear, because it's already pretty clear about what situations make it okay, you know? So like if it's a personal illness or disability, that might be sudden, you know, and then I think the person would understand if it's logistically impossible to make it happen by that point.
Yeah, so I guess it would come down to us trying to be as considerate as possible to the staff that if you really want to attend remotely, make sure that they're aware and plenty of time to be able to adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
There's a lot of conversation going on over there. Did you guys have some epiphany?
I mean, there's either a need to amend the ordinance as written to insert a specific, you know, time requirement for the advance notice, but the, how the procedure works is that there has to be notice and then at the meeting itself, there has to be, the corporate authorities have to, that are then present, have to actually take a vote to allow the absent member to then attend. So that consideration of whether they thought there was due notice or practicality can be, can be thought of at that vote at that time. Or we can specifically put it in, right? It's up to you.
So Alderman Favor?
And the remote participants may vote?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Remote participants may vote?
Yes, as long as they are approved. If the vote is to allow for the remote participant to attend, then it is just as if they are attending, they can vote.
And if we voted down, does Jeff in the back room just hit a button and they're gone or?
Yeah, bad connection.
I, okay, City Manager.
May I recommend that where possible, and we can say it to that effect, that the official notifies, provides notification at noon of the day of the meeting, if that's agreeable to you, that gives us...
But that would require us to go back and this ordinance would have to come back before us or?
So you've got the ordinance right here.
Uh huh, yeah.
So we just amend and what I would say is that actually it's pretty easy here. The B section says, if a member wishes to attend a meeting by other means, the member must notify the recording secretary or clerk of the public body by noon of the day of the meeting unless advanced notice isn't practical. Advanced notice being impractical, the tornado just hit your house and you're climbing out.
I think going with what I'm hearing, though, I think we could just leave it as is.
Just leave it as is.
If it becomes a problem, we can always change it.
Okay.
But, yeah. Does that sound good to you, Alderman Morris?
Yeah.
Yeah, just run with it.
Is it okay with you, Alderman Favor? All right, just made sure. All right, other discussions or comments on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
I just want to be clear, so if I'm voting yes, it stays the same?
Stays the same.
Okay, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-030 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
There was a motion to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-030, second reading has been waived. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-031, amending Chapter 59, Economic Development Commission, Section 59.01, commission created to change the annual minimum meeting requirements. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You recall that on June 13th, the council considered a number of possible changes to different boards and commissions or meeting times, the composition and so on. And at that time, there was nothing said about the Economic Development Commission. The commission met subsequent to that council meeting on July 8th, which was a day after the meeting agenda for the last council meeting was already published, and determined that they wanted to suspend their regular meeting schedule in favor of an as-needed schedule that, meaning that the mayor could call a meeting of the EDC at his or her pleasure. So we were carrying forward the EDC's recommendation and that's the nature of this ordinance.
Which I think is great to have them on demand when something comes up if needed. Any comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Morris.
I just want to express support for this. I was the liaison to the Economic Development Commission and it makes sense.
All right. Hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-031 passes on first reading. I would entertain a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-031, second reading has been waived. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance 2022-032, approving an amendment to the final plat of the Bridges of River Miss Phase Two, approved by ordinance 1997-110 to allow a modular classroom at Gwendolyn Brooks Elementary School, 3225 Sangamon Road, DeKalb County Unit, DeKalb County Unit, unit, oh, that's a, that's a spelling, that's why I tripped up. DeKalb County Unit School District number 428. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Sorry, Mayor.
No worries. It's like unity, wait, Sandra.
I'm supposed to approve that. First of all, Tammy Carson is here today representing the school district, so thank you for being patient, Tammy. What we're doing here is amending the final plan to Phase Two of the River Miss subdivision in which Gwendolyn Brooks Elementary School can be found. That particular plan is, does not feature a modular classroom and DU DO requires we go back and we make an adjustment to that plan. There's considerable background here for this particular point. The district is interested in building an intensive instructional space and Tammy could probably ask, answer questions on all that goes into that. But at this particular school, they would be converting a particular space inside to that and the modular classroom would be needed temporarily for up to three years to, until another way is found to accommodate the multiple needs that go into educating our elementary school children. This is, in effect, a double Y, is that what it is? I shouldn't put it that way. Yeah, it's a two N, which would be located directly south of the school building as is presently cited. And this is a hard surface already, but it's an area that would be, I'm sorry, Dan. Jeff is ahead of me here, okay. That's how one would look. This is not a first time that we have considered modular classrooms. Since I've been here, Tyler, Clinton, Rosette and Littlejohn Schools have had them for a time to address particular changing demands. And the Plan Commission took this up on July 18th, voting unanimously to recommend approval to you and we recommend approval of the Plan Commission recommendation.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Morris.
I do want to know what an intensive instructional spaces.
An intensive class is actually a class that we've had in our curriculum for some time. It's one of our special needs programs at our elementary level. It's been located at Malta and Founders and the need is to add additional intensive classrooms. One will be at Brooks and one will be at Cortland this fall. And with that, we are looking to move our music classroom out of the building and into the mobile classroom, just as we have at the other locations that have mobile classroom
And it sounds like Littlejohn still has a mobile unit. How many of the schools have mobile units right now?
We currently have one at Littlejohn Elementary, Lincoln Elementary. Jefferson has had a mobile that we did not have in use and that has recently been back into use, but not, but it's owned by the district and it's been on the property for a number of years. And now we are adding to Brooks Elementary and Cortland Elementary.
Wow.
So five.
Alderwoman Larson.
I guess not really a question, but just, that was part of it, how many do we have? But I look at this as the last thing the city and the school district wants to do is say, oh, we need a new school, build a school and then realize we don't need a school in five years from now. And I look at these as a temporary, but do you have plans? Because now, when you have enough classrooms, are we getting to the, when do we get to the point where it's like a new, this generates enough for a new school? Do you have metrics for that?
We do. We have been looking at ways to reduce our class size because of our enrollment in our classes, which in turn will require additional class spaces just in what we currently have. So we've completed a demographer study as well as a space capacity study, a building capacity study over the past year. And we are looking at options in the district, which could be proposals for additions on a school, could be new school buildings, could be purchasing buildings. There's a number of avenues we're looking at, which then in that equation would be the removal of our mobile classroom units that we have out there. That obviously takes significant time, but many discussions have been going on this year and will continue as the year continues. Thank you.
No comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-032 passes on first reading. Would you like us to pass this on second? Okay, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance 2022-032, second reading has been waived. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-033, approving a special use permit for a drive-through restaurant at 922, thanks for coming out tonight, Tammy. At 922 South Forest Street, Proper Hospitality Group LLC, Peter Panagakis, Panagakis, sorry. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
City Manager. Oh, sorry, moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And restaurateurs find this, this is like the middle of the night for you, right? So, thank you for being here, Pete. So the petitioner has been working with city staff for a number of months now and has come up with a plan to bring new life to the former KFC restaurant on South Forest Street that hopefully is the last time we mention that name in this, in this building. So it will now be the home of Anna's Sandwich Shop. It will have inside seating and limited drive-through, which will have a mobile order pickup window. This pickup is, option is something that is also accounted for in the flow of traffic around the building and we've had a lot of cooperation in how that's laid out and the access to a rather small alley, which would not really afford enough room for regular traffic coming to and from the restaurant was cut off. Now it'd be a fence and there'll be landscaping and so forth and we're just very pleased with the interaction. The drive-through may not immediately be put to use, but it, we need to proceed before the project is open to know if that will be all right with you. So it's before you tonight, it's been before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's considerable amount of detail here about where the dumpster is going to be, there are more than enough standard spaces and handicap spaces and there's going to be remodeling on the outside. The notable KFC cupola will be removed. It's going to be in a shop from here on. So we're pleased, we're very happy to see this and the Planning and Zoning Commission was too and recommended unanimously that you support this.[1758.12]
Council, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman McAdams.
I just want to thank you for your investment in Fourth Street. It'll definitely help with the economic development in the area, and we're looking forward to it.
Thanks for the love, Mr. Orville.
Yes, Alderwoman Morris.
Yeah, I was so excited when I saw this. I was like, "Woohoo!" So I just wanted... Yeah. Thank you.
Any others? All right, I couldn't agree more. I hear about, "Why doesn't the city..." And we had this conversation earlier this evening, but it takes an entrepreneur, it takes someone, again, that sees a need and then fills the need. And I can't say enough how wonderful it is that you are going to invest in that particular property, but then also on the south side. And with everything going on the south side, I'm sure that's what you've had your eyes on. I think it's going to be an incredibly successful endeavor for you, and I can't wait to come by and be a purveyor of your establishment. So thank you so much again for your investment.
Thanks for the love.
Yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-033 passes on first reading. I would entertain a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-033, second reading has been waived. Yes, sir?
Alderman, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
You betcha. Thank you. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-034, approving a final plat for the SVCSG DeKalb County subdivision along Gerler Road, Midland Trust Company, James Plainey. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks also to Mr. Plainey, who's sitting in the back. And I'll just very quickly mention what's going on here, and then I'll yield to you, sir.
I'll step forward in case...
Okay, step forward in case I falter.
In case I need to remember the program.
Yes. And so, this is truly, it's a minor change. There's a 36... a little over 36-acre parcel. 23.6 acres of that have been designated for a solar energy generation facility. Some of you are familiar with that. There's a remaining 12.7 acres. The... So the creation here of two lots, this 23.6 acre and a 12.7 acre, the smaller would be back before you probably if there is a user, an end-user for that. But this is all very straightforward. The Plasberg review by all the city departments. Mr. Plainey is content with the final shape of it, as far as I know, and we are happy to say the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed that the council should proceed to approve this. So we support that.
Yeah, just for clarification, I'm the landlord, not the owner of the solar array.
Okay. Comments or questions, Council?
Pardon?
I'm asking if Council has any questions for you.
I have a very brief letter, if I could read, please?
Sure, go ahead.
I wrote it, and I did not, because the health, wasn't able to attend the planning and zoning, but had a gentleman from SunVest read it. So I'll read it now to you folks. It's regarding the final plat for 23 acres on 3100 South First Street. I wish to thank the city council, the mayor, and the city manager for the support of my project, along with the folks from SunVest. My sincere thanks to Dan Olson and the city's team for their time and effort spent on this project since we started it in 19... excuse me, started in 2018. They treated it as if it were the most important project at hand, although there were some much bigger ones at the time going on. They were also tireless in answering my many non-professional questions, and I thank you all. DeKalb continues to be a great place to do business, and in addition to going to NIU, which I did in '68. That's all. I just wanted to express that.
Go Huskies!
Okay. I can go home? Oh, no, you got to vote.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
[laughing] You might want to stay for that part.
[laughing]
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-034 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-034, second reading has been waived. Thank you for coming out, sir. Thanks for investing in DeKalb. We really appreciate it. Have a great evening now.
Thank you.
I don't want it to go uncommented on about just the work city staff has done. I hear comments like his very often, and the standard that we have set at the city of DeKalb to help entrepreneurs, help residents, help anyone looking to improve their life, or improve their business, or invest in our community, city staff continues to make sure that they are a priority, and we heard it right from them. So in this case, Dan really appreciated all your hard work, helping that gentleman be successful with his endeavor. All right, moving on to number six, ordinance 2022-035, amending Chapter 51, traffic scheduled to be through-street, stop intersections and yield intersections, to establish a stop condition for both Fifth Street and Sixth Street as they intersect Culver Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager.
This was tacked on at the request of city engineer Zach Gill, and whatever Mr. Gill wants, I usually do. But this makes a lot of sense. If you've been down there, you can see this is uncontrolled right now, and there is more traffic in the area, and this is a safety matter, and it's also in the vicinity of the school, and the city engineer has recommended this, and I support it.
Council, questions? Alderman Verbic?
We certainly have other intersections in the city that should have a look... have a look-see with the yield situation, as a vehicle ended up in our mother's front yard on Tenth and Davie. So dangerous out there, especially if there's low-hanging tree limbs and whatnot, that they can't see that that's an actual yield. So I think that more intersections do need actual stop signs going both ways.
Especially on these where there aren't any signs.
Right.
And that was the issue here. All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-035 passes. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2022-035, second reading has been waived. Moving on to Agenda Item N, Reports and Communications, Councilmember Reports. Who would like to kick it off? Alderman Verbic?
Northern Illinois University's Barcima Alumni and Visitor Center welcomes 50 Men Who Cook for its 18th year on Saturday, August 13th, from 6:00 until 9:00 p.m. Tickets are available at CassidyKale.org. Please join us.
Awesome. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Okay. Alderwoman Larson?
No report.
Alderwoman Morris?
I held my ward meeting last week, and a couple of topics that did come up were Ridge Road safety, and the city engineer was thankfully there to elaborate in detail on some of his plans for that. So we're looking forward to some of the traffic calming islands that may be coming in the future. What else? Other quick topics were affordable housing, encouraging housing starts, and one of the students mentioned it, cul-de-sac-ing of some of the area over by Blackhawk in the Annie Glidden North area. So that's really exciting. I almost forgot that was about to happen, and that's coming up here... sorry, coming up here in a couple of weeks. So that'll be happening. That's all.
Alderman Smith?
I... Special thanks to Zach for keeping me updated on 13th and 14th, as he knows I've been getting a lot of calls. I do see they dropped the mill machine, so I'm hoping they'll be out there at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow, and we'll have some streets in the next few weeks. And thank you to the residents. They've been extremely patient through this endeavor. That's it.
Alderman McAdams?
Just a reminder that the fifth ward meeting will be held on August 3rd. That's a Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. at Cornerstone. Everyone is welcome. Please enter through the back of the building.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
For me, just a few items. I attended the First United Methodist Church's groundbreaking yesterday. Wonderfully attended event. There must have been 50 people there. I mean, they were having trouble parking cars. So it was really cool just to see the excitement with the congregation, and knowing that they've raised a considerable amount of the money that they need to be able to start breaking ground and making that church happen. So I think that's going to be a great addition to the northwest corridor, for sure. I also met with Megan Horsted. She's the new Daily Chronicle reporter, so had lunch with her. So it was good just to get to know her and help give her a little bit of lay of the land, and she had a ton of questions, which was good to go through. So that was just a nice meeting. City Manager Nicholas and I also sat down with the Chief of Police, and, you know, had a bunch of conversations about crime in the community, violent crime, crime-free housing, just to start getting, at least for me especially, to start getting a lay of the land, and understand what possibilities we have before us in the future to continue to go after and drive down violent crime in DeKalb. So that was a good conversation, and that was the beginning of multiple conversations that we'll be having in the future. Also, I attended the University Village Collaborative. That's a... call it a vibrant group. There were multiple entities that continue to show up and have ideas, and they've got an event coming. And for the life of me, I'm sorry, I don't remember what it is or the day of it, but I'll have it by the next council meeting, because it's after that. So I'll share it then. But just another event at Annie Glidden North that'll help educate the residents there in University Village around just a bunch of the opportunities and services that are available through our nonprofit community. Then also, I had some time with Alderman Perkins, which was great. And I encourage all council members, reach out to me as much as you want. I'm happy to always sit down and chat, and you know, a lot of you, I constantly do reach out to try and set up a meeting just to, you know, get on the same page and make sure we're all going in the same direction as much as we can, but especially to hear individual concerns. So those are a priority of mine then, as I meet weekly with the city manager to discuss those. So thanks for taking the time, Alderman Perkins. I appreciate that. Then we had the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission meeting. Great discussion about murals. There's a lot of activity there, and I think we're going to continue to generate more and more activity. And I look forward to some of the selections that they're going to make coming before council, and sharing with you a lot of the public art projects that are going to start materializing around our community, which I think is just fantastic. And then the other one, I don't have a script for it at all, but I just wanted to address the DeKalb Police Department directly. You know, there's just a lot of comments out there that appall me. Generalizations being made about you all, and I can't tell you enough from this podium, sitting here, and when I see our police department, when I go on ride-alongs, when I attend meetings, when I have questions, comments, when I need them to respond to a resident, it doesn't matter. Any interaction that I have with the DeKalb Police Force, I think we have one of the most professional, respectful groups that a city could ever absolutely wish to have. And Deputy Chief, I really would appreciate it if you could share that with the rank-and-file, that through my lens and my eyes, I couldn't be more proud of the group that patrols our streets and keeps our city safe. So just know from the podium here, you guys are doing a great job, and I need them all to understand that. Not everyone reflects this council in any way, shape, or form.[1666.02][1666.02][applause] So with that, City Manager Nicholas, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your kind words. I share your words entirely, as you know. I am very proud of the unselfish service that our police department provides us every day, 24/7. The men and women of the department are always alert to the hazards and the risks that are part of life and part of our community, and they protect us around the clock. So I thank them, and I hope you'll carry my thanks too, and whenever I'm over there, I think.
Thanks.
The members of the department as well.
Awesome. All right. Hang on a sec. So... Then we're going to move on to Agenda Item O, and I'd ask for a motion to hold an executive session, which is, number one, collective bargaining as provided for, and five, ILCS 120/2 C2. Number two, the sale and lease of real property as provided for, and five, ILCS 120/2 C6. And number three, executive session minutes as provided for, and five, ILCS 120/2 C21. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
All right. I will now have the regular meeting is now in recess.